I'm going to bring forward the item of petitions forward in order for us to air the views of residents before members debate the next motion. Firstly, I will receive the two petitions that are under 1,000 signatures from councillor Williamson and then the one from councillor May. Councillor Williamson, would you like to announce your petition and then bring it forward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So we, the undersigned, call upon Brockstone Borough Council to review the recently implemented increase in off-street car parking charges across the borough. Many businesses in Eastwood are already seeing a significant drop in business turnover as a result of these charges. We have concerns about the long-term effect of this on local business owners and their customers' livelihoods. We call on the Borough Council to urgently review the changes and to reinstate the one-hour free parking in all borough car parks and bring back free evening parking. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll give that to you. Thank you. Councillor May, would you like to read us your petition and bring it forward?
It's been sent to the monitor office away. It's been sent on email. It's just on behalf of Kimberley Town Council wanted me to send it in, so I've sent it into the monitor office. I think it's got about 200 signatures. It's about car parking in regards to Kimberley.
Okay, thank you. Our next petition is from Pippa Diven-Dubble. Would you like to come forward and read the wording of your petition?
Thank you. On the 1st of January, the parking charges changed in the two council car parks on Chillwall Road. Many businesses are already seeing a drop in business and have serious concerns about the long-term effects of this on their livelihoods. When the tram was installed on Chillwall Road, the free on-street parking was removed and replaced by the two car parks and one-hour free parking was in place to provide short-stay parking instead. We are asking Brockstone Borough Council to reverse the change to parking charges for both car parks on Chillwall Road and reinstate the free hour and free evening parking.
Would any members like to speak on the petition? Councillor Marshall, would you like to speak?
Yeah, thank you, Chair, Madam Mayor. I'm really glad you've rearranged the agenda because I think that kind of presents the right sequencing for the meeting. I can categorically state, promise here, that I will talk at length about the issues within the petition and the questions that are being put and the motion as well. So I'm not going to talk about it now. I recognise the strength of feeling from the residents, but I'll contribute as more discussion takes place and more sequencing takes place at the meeting. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Winfield?
I literally just wanted to clarify because I only heard that when I was declaring the interest of Brockstone Community Projects, about 7.1 being responded to, but are my trustees and employees allowed to stay in the room for this debate?
Sorry, your interest is that you've...
I'm the Chair, and there are other people in the room that are the employee of my charity or other trustees in the charity, and we're based on Chillwall High Road, so...
One of the businesses that are being affected.
It could be viewed that way.
Viewed that way, yeah. Well, in respect of the fact that I think many people may have connections, it wasn't viewed that you would need to leave the room?
Thank you, that's a relief.
Okay, would anybody else like to speak on the petition? Councillor Radulovich?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the petitions. They are a comp... this is a complicated issue, and as a consequence of that, I'd like to save my responses to the petitions until the actual motion, so it can be considered as a whole, because I can't see the sense in making one speech for one petition, one for another, and then for a motion as well. So I will wait until appropriate time to make the response.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I shall keep my powder dry until the official motion is debated.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else before... no, okay. Any decisions on the petition will be made after the decision on the motion. So now, we have three questions from members of the public, two to councillor Radulovich and one for councillor Marshall. I'm going to take the questions for councillor Radulovich together and then if you would like to respond after we've heard both questions. Firstly, from Mr Assasiv Silver, business owner of The Jewelers in Beeston Square.
Thank you. One of Brockstone Borough Council's stated aims is to support and develop activity that promotes regeneration and vitality of the borough's town centres. Would the leader of the council therefore agree with me that the removal of the free one-hour parking alongside of the introduction of evening charges has been a disaster for town centres in the borough? Furthermore, the reduction in town centre footfall numbers due to the reduction of people paying to park in the town centres without the benefit of commerce rate improvements in public transport links has directly contributed to many small independent businesses now being in a precarious financial position. Will you agree for a full consultation on these changes and an urgent review?
Thank you. Could we have the next question from Mr Oliver, please? Would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me the opportunity to ask a question to the leader of the council. Fortunately, I won't be here for the motion when it gets debated because I have a relaunch night for my business which is already failing on a high street that has limited parking and I'm late for. Here's my question to the leader. Eastwood's levelling up bid failed, and now this council's decision to introduce additional parking charges in the town centres has delivered another blow to businesses and residents in Eastwood. One of the stated aims of this council is to work with key stakeholders in Eastwood to produce regeneration plans. Would the leader agree with me that by removing the free-for-one-hour parking and introducing evening parking charges without consultation, the centre of Eastwood is at a disadvantage when consumers make decisions about where to shop? The adjacent authority, Ashfield, still retains free parking for two hours, may I add. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, councillor Radulovich?
Madam Mayor, just getting in, I realise the last question here, I've got to leave shortly, so I'll just take that one first. There has been an impact, as you would expect, when car parking charges have been implemented. Well, let's explode one of the myths first of all. You all said we've removed free parking. It's not true. That is not true. If you take a look, for instance, Madam Mayor, at all the figures, and Brockstone runs 29 car parks across the whole of the borough, 454 in Beeston, 169 in Eastwood, 63 in Kimberley, and 155 in Stapleford. And if you look, Madam Mayor, at all weekends, in Kimberley, for instance, Saturday and Sunday, all car parking is free. Free, not two hours, like in Ashfield, free. Yeah? Three out of four car parks in Kimberley are free, all the time. And at weekends, every car park in Kimberley is free. Everyone. So, Madam Mayor, let's come to Beeston. Beeston has 454 car parking spaces, and again, at the weekend on Saturday, for instance, you talk about evening and everything on Saturday, 22% of all spaces in Beeston car parks are free on Saturday, and all, 100%, of all 454 car parking spaces on a Sunday, are free. Are free. Pardon? Are you disputing that?
Smoking mirrors.
Smoking mirrors. So you get free car parking on a whole day and you go...
Can you not shout out, please? Please, can you not shout out from the back?
He can't stop himself. You're today abusing the Mayor in Eastwood, I'm only the deputy mayor. So, Madam Mayor, if you look at, if you look again on Saturday car parking in Eastwood, in Kimberley, in Stapleford, and Beeston, you've all got some free parking at weekends, and 100% across all car parks in Brockstone is free on a Sunday. So let's get that out of the way first of all. So, Madam Mayor, yes, there is free car parking, and no authority that I know offers free car parking like that, unless you're going to tell me different somebody tonight, nobody. So, Madam Mayor, what was happened was, to try and encourage and to make up the loss of opportunity and finance to regenerate our town centres, we moved a charge of £1 for the first two hours. It used to be a first hour free and a second hour you paid a pound, four pounds for two hours. We changed that because we needed to raise revenue to protect services and to continue investment. And so before I even start saying, well, what have you invested in town centres, let me just tell you. So, Madam Mayor, let's start off with Kimberley again. 23 businesses in Stapleford have been awarded a grant aid scheme, total sum £94,471.80 in grant money. The Loaf Fund has out 14 businesses in itself, and that is £284,864.80. And also, Madam Mayor, through UKSPF, which was substituted, of course, when we went through Brexit for the European Social Fund, has helped a fair amount of five businesses, total of £81,980. So that's 42 businesses in Kimberley alone that have been awarded just over £461,000. And from the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, particularly in Beeston, Eastwood and Stapleford, in the first two years alone of this programme, and we're just about to enter year three, Madam Mayor, 33 businesses have been helped in Beeston, a total of over £109,000. 14 businesses in Eastwood provided £38,000 grant aid funded, and two businesses awarded £3,600 of funding in Stapleford. But also, Madam Mayor, I'll come to more of the detail when we debate the motion, to give you a flavour of the sort of response that I would like to make tonight. But also, Madam Mayor, what is never mentioned by anybody else is the fact that they all get small business rate relief. Madam Mayor, there are, in Brockstone, 2,679 properties... Pardon? Which the number of small business rates relief is over 1,000, it's 1,143, with a total ratable value of over £3,169,773. So, Madam Mayor, to say we've not invested in the town centres is completely wrong. And also, the ratable value, of course, Madam Mayor, anybody that has a ratable value under £12,000, which is set by the district value, by the way, not by this council, can get small business rate relief, and then it declines in increments from that figure. So, Madam Mayor, the issue has always been about trying to invest more in our town centres. That's been the issue, to try and encourage people. But it isn't just car parking that's the issue in your town centres. Let's talk about some of the issues that affect your footfall in your town centres, shall we? Eastwood, not one single green grove is left. One, Madam Mayor, butcher on the main road, one on Mansfield Road. When you look round at your shops, your ironmongers that was there before being killed, all gone. All gone. But the biggest hole in town centres has been caused by the withdrawal of banking services. You take a look at Beeston Town Centre, that whole section was dedicated to the banking industry, now gone. And in Eastwood, it's the same. Some of them are restaurants, one of them has been taken over by another business. So, Madam Mayor, we've been campaigning now for more than five years for the government to implement its 2019 manifesto pledge, which was to review business rates.
Councillor Radulovich, you're answering the questions.
Yes, I am. Thank you. I thought I was doing quite well, but obviously they don't think so. So, Madam Mayor, we've been campaigning to try and raise the funds, and we were promised 100% rate retention, so that that meant we could have further help to support businesses in town centres. That never happened. Couldn't find the parliamentary time. Then it went down to 75%, Madam Mayor. We were promised for three years we would have rate reform, never happened, business rate reform, never happened. And so what happened, Madam Mayor? The government top sliced the grant that businesses pay in places like Brockstone to set up a levelling up fund, which largely went to mostly the urban districts, particularly places as well, which you'll be interested in, councillor, what's like Newark, who got more than their face here, while we got nothing in the whole of the north of the borough in Eastwood yet again. So, Madam Mayor, that answers that question, particularly about what we're doing about investing in town centres. What I will be saying is that we are quite prepared to talk to you. Quite prepared. You've never made the offer, so just before you start smiling and laughing, look, you've never come to me and said, can we talk to you? I've sent your message as well, I've replied.
Councillor, we shouldn't really be engaging.
I know, I appreciate that. I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. But we're enjoying the talk. So, Madam Mayor, we are quite prepared to listen and to talk. And I realise I'm over time, thank you.
Okay. No, 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 right, sorry, no.
Sorry, sorry. No, did you stop this? Sorry, I will speak over you.
Can we have, is there any way of getting him removed from the building?
Yes, we may, if you could be able to remove.
Sorry. No. Officers, can we have him removed?
No, the decision of the Mayor is for you to leave the meeting, please.
Can you please leave the room? Thank you. So we did ask for no theatre this evening, I'm sorry that you did get some.
I think if you just give a warning, if there's any further outbursts, they'll...
Yeah. Yeah. If there is any further outbursts, we will be asking you to leave the room, you know, nobody can discuss anything properly under those circumstances. So, okay, after that little bit of a drama, we have got a question for councillor Marshall from Pippa Diven-Dubble. Is that right? Would you like to...
Diven-Dubble.
Diven-Dubble.
Businesses on Chillwall Road suffered years of disruption due to the tram works. Many customers left for good and no longer shop in this area, although many have also returned. At the time, we lost all on-street parking due to the tram build. The two car parks on Chillwall Road were installed to replace the removed on-street parking. Would the portfolio holder agree that, along with other parts of the borough, businesses in Beeston are struggling as a result of the changes brought in on the 1st of January 2024 to the parking charges? Will he reaffirm Brockstone Council's commitment to vibrant town centres by reinstating the free-for-one-hour parking and review evening parking arrangements? Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to respond, councillor Marshall?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And in the heat of the meeting, I'd like to congratulate you on your own, I think you're doing a sterling job at trying to control this as well. And thank you, Philippa, for the question as well, which I think is a legitimate question. It's an important question, and I'm going to try my best to answer it. But before I start on that, I will ask people to cast their minds back to what it was like before the tram. And some of us in the room will remember, and some of us will remember what Chillwall High Road was like, when buses used to get stuck trying to pass each other outside Salvatoris Airdresses, and I used to get my haircut at Salvatoris. I've got a lot less air than I used to do there. There was no development at Colper Course, there was the grimy Myfords Building, and no parking there at all. And I don't think it was quite the Alcian days, it was when Sids was Sids, now that was the Alcian days. Now, I remember those days very, very well. And as I say, I used to get my haircut there at Salvatoris before Cutting Edge moved across the road for the first time into Salvatoris, before they moved to the premises where they are now. And I remember the hours on the other side as well, there was no parking at all. In actual fact, there was a limited number of time-related parking outside of shop fronts on Chillwall High Road, less than the parking that has existed since the introduction of the tram. There was not a plethora of on-street parking outside Chillwall Road shops, and there never has been. There never has been. There was a limited number, less than the car parks that were replaced at the time of the tram. And the tram's important. The tram is important, and I'm not hypocrite, and I won't stand here and say I'm an hypocrite. I support the tram, and I've supported the tram because I think they're important for town centres, I think they're important for regeneration of conurbations. I'm only heartbroken that the tram network hasn't been invested in and used in more across wider Nottingham and we weren't able to take that model out further. But I remember the tram incredibly well because I represented the Chillwall Road traders when Anna Subrie didn't give a toss, when the county council didn't give a toss, and the city council were trying to wash their hands of representing any of the interests of the traders on the chill who were disturbed by the tram works. And I chaired meetings there for two years, nearly two years, without fail. And during that time, representative of all the traders, we managed to get increased grants from the compensation award of the tram, we managed to get increased shop front grants, we managed to get events planned for the street where nobody else wanted to, we got cleaning services increased, all because I was representing the Traders Road tram where nobody else would. So I understand the pressures of that tram and the impacts that it has had and the development of that. Now, the motion itself, sorry, the question itself says the two car parks there were to replace the limited car parking, and I think there was some agreement there, there definitely was, Philippa, some agreement there. Interestingly, this council has only just in the last two years received almost the full compensation payment that it was awarded for the disruptive works of the tram. This council has subsidised all the costs for free parking alongside those car parks, and we didn't receive a bean until about 2021, 22, and 22, 23, and it hit the accounts there, where we got the compensation that we were due, that was promised when the tram started in 2014. And we still haven't received all the compensation, by the way, that were due from the city council, even to this day. Even to this day. So I think it's kind of a little disingenuous to say that this council hasn't supported the businesses as other questions have, and are a little bit disingenuous with the inference of this one. Now, specifically, the question says...
Councillor Marshall, you've got 30 seconds.
Specifically, the question says, will we review the car parking charges? Well, I've met all the business owners who I offered that to, I met Cutting Edge, I met Snuggles and Kisses, I met other members, and we all sat up there in the members' room and we had some discussions, and I said I would review, as the press release did, when we introduced car parking charges, and like every other policy in this council, they are all under review. And we all had a discussion earlier about the mechanism that can be used for reviewing things, and I think that's appropriate. I think that's the appropriate mechanism for reviewing it. In addition, I can commit here that as a council, we will engage with the four towns and businesses in there.
Can I ask you to wrap up?
I will do, but this is an important point, it's perhaps the most important point. I will commit to engaging with business representatives from the four towns across Brockstone who are perceived to be affected by tram implications, and I did ask all those businesses to summarise the impact, the financial impact to me, and I didn't receive one, Philippa.
Well, I do imagine you did.
Not the financial impact, she didn't. I asked for summary accounts of those things, and that did not happen. And that did not happen.
Councillor, can I ask you...
Yeah, I will. But I will commit to a working group with small businesses like have existed before and have been dissolved before by the businesses, they dissolve themselves. But we will commit to that as a council, to work with businesses and to work with Clare Ward, the Mayor, to look at opportunities for investment in the four town centres. But I think it will be a co-venture, it will be a joint venture in trying to do that. And I don't think it can all be placed on the council when we'll come on to the financial pressures that we're under into the motion in a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Before we all explode, Madam Mayor, could we have a window open?
We've got one, I think we've, a couple have been opened, yeah. That one's open, isn't it? Okay, so we're going to move on to item for motion on car parking charges. So this motion has been received by councillors Richard McCree, Donna McCree, Steve Carr, Barbara Carr, and Elizabeth Williamson. Do we have a proposer? Thank you, councillor Carr. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Barbara Carr.
I reserve the right to speak.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the outset, Madam Mayor, I want to make it perfectly clear that this is not, and it never has been, a political stunt. No, it is not a political stunt. Now, I'll tell you why, councillor Owen, it's nice we know where the Conservatives stand on this. This is councillors responding to the genuine concerns of residents and businesses, and which are substantial in number. I'm absolutely shocked by your outbursts there, councillor Owen. Clearly, you don't support business anymore in the Conservative Party. Car parking charges were introduced in 2010 for council-owned car parks. The basis was one hour free, two hours at £1, three hours at £1.50, and £3 all day. In October 2015, it was agreed that no ticket would be required for any car park after 4pm Monday to Friday, effectively creating a free after 3 arrangement. And I think the important thing there, after the leader's response to questions, is Monday to Friday was the arrangement. Free Saturday parking was also introduced at one main car park in each of the four main towns in the borough. In October 2023, a report came to Cabinet suggesting that a review of charges was now appropriate for the following reasons. Use of car parking was back to pre-pandemic levels, the cost to provide in the car parks was £294,000, with income generated of £255,000, leaving a shortfall of £39,000 met from the general fund. Due to investment in a new cinema and shopping restaurant complex in Beeston, the evening economy had grown, and it might be worth considering introducing charges up to 10pm. Well, you know, consider something has grown and then charging, so it actually reduces again, not very clever. Efforts had already remained to reduce costs and increase income from permit sales, et cetera. Options were provided with a view to: option one, ensuring the cost of off-street parking is met through charges; option two, increasing income to ensure that service costs do not adversely impact on the general fund. The Cabinet chose option two, which was estimated to generate an additional income of £284,700. Members of the public should be reminded that the Cabinet is made up of councillors from one party, Brockstone Labour. Even the Tories, when they had a Cabinet, included councillors from other parties. New charges were implemented on the 1st of January 2024. New charges were implemented on the first of January 2024 without any consultation with residents or businesses. Of course, this could not have happened if it had been done under the normal budget process which requires consultation. This council is not doing what it promised to do within its own corporate plan. Invest in local businesses, not all the things that we've already heard today, which are actually government-funded, nothing to do with the council, and thriving town centres with a buzzing night-time economies. Local Beeston businesses have contacted us to state that they have seen up to a seventy percent fall in business. Even non-independents such as Costa are saying business is much lower than it was before the first of January. How is charging up to ten P M helping restaurants and the Arc Cinema attract new business? The number of comments I have seen by residents saying they're now go to showcase because they don't have to pay for parking is staggering. The free car parks operated by Tesco and Sainsbury supermarkets are full of people who are avoiding paying the increased car parking charges. This is driving business away from independence. A good example is the chemist on Chilwell Road who are losing their prescription customers to Tesco Pharmacy because they can pop in for free. How long until the supermarkets challenge the covenants within their agreements around providing free parking? It would be hypocritical of this council not to agree any requests from them, given that we now charge. Car parking on residential roads has increased, especially around the Chilwell Road end of Beeston. This is causing great inconvenience to many residents. Car parking figures for January twenty four reduced by eleven thousand vehicles, February by thirteen thousand, March by thirteen thousand, April by nine thousand. That's a staggering forty-six thousand in the first third of 2024. Footfall in all borough town centres is down twenty-five percent. A senior officer at this council has admitted that markets are not doing well because, and I quote, "of the increases to car parking charges." And if anybody wants to see the email, I'm quite happy to share it then. You say you don't want people to subsidise car users, but you are happy for residents of the borough to subsidise a failing markets operation. You say efforts have been made to reduce costs, but according to figures online, the cost of staffing the car parks rose to around £162,000 in 2019, 20, from a previous figure of £662,000 in 2016, 17. And it remains at £133,000 in 22, 23. Madam Mayor, we're calling for a review and it sounds as though councillor Marshall is going to agree to a review in what he said to the reply to his question, I remind him of that. A full review of all parking charges and a return to the free hour has to be the best way forward. Nothing will be acceptable to help our struggling residents and businesses other than a return to free parking for one hour. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Carr. Um, would you like to speak Barbara Carr?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would like to speak. As previously mentioned by my colleague and husband councillor Steve Carr, the decision to change the basis of the tariffs within the borough car parks was taken at the cabinet meeting last October. Extracted from those cabinet papers, meeting, sorry, those cabinet meeting papers was the following sentence. The potential uplift in income that could be generated from changes in parking tariffs will provide substantial additional resources as the council looks to meet its challenging budget gap for the general fund. I've got two issues with that statement. Number one, the word substantial. The Road Traffic Regulation Act of nineteen eighty-four cannot be used to raise revenue through stealth taxation. The Road Traffic Regulation Act is not a fiscal or taxing statute and using funds for the purposes outside the statute is not lawful. This applies to off-street parking in councils' car parks as the powers to charge are derived through that act. There is however, some discretion to budget for a modest, and I repeat the word modest surplus, where reasonable. But I don't think anyone in this room could possibly consider that additional income of £284,000 per annum can be classified as modest. And it also says that you're meeting a gap. Well, actually it's a shortfall in the general fund. And I'll quote again from the Road Traffic Act. Car parking charges cannot be used for any purpose outside of the objectives of that act. And I'm sure the cabinet members from the previous cabinet were aware, as it was stated in the legal officers' comments, that car parking charging can only be used to offset certain things, including the costs of actually running the car park. Section fifty-five subsection four of the act sets out purposes for which the modest surplus can be used. Firstly, provisions and maintenance of off-street parking and improving open spaces such as parks. And then there are two things that you can use it for, but we don't pay for those. That's public transport and highway improvements, which we wish we could pay for with all the potholes. You can't use it for anything else. So I'm wondering what the deputy leader was thinking when he said to the Nottingham Evening Post, and he's been quoted several times, "We believe that these changes to our car parking charges will allow the council to invest in facilities and prevent cuts to jobs and services, which means we can deliver on our commitments to keep our town centres clean, invest in new leisure facilities like changing places toilets and help our wider ambition of providing new leisure facilities." First of all, the changing places toilets in the square have been paid for, but obviously there may be others being, you know, considered. And the other two things cannot legally be funded by any surplus from parking charges. So does he really believe that increasing these charges can help meet the shortfall in the general fund? When actually any excess should be ring-fenced and kept apart and only used as previously stated. I also note that within the capital budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, the council intends to borrow via prudential loans for the purposes of, number one, paying display machines, thirty-six thousand pound, car park resurfacing, thirty thousand pound, and security for parks, twenty-eight thousand pound. All things that could be paid for from this income, but they want to borrow the money. I'm assuming, I'm giving them the benefit of the doubt, they've chosen to borrow the money in lieu of future excesses. But that still only comes to ninety-four thousand pounds, not the expected surplus of nearly a quarter of a billion. Also, there is no evidence of ring-fencing that I can find. Within the revenue budget for twenty-four, twenty-five, they've included the increase in charges at a figure of two hundred and seventy thousand, resulting in a net decrease in expenditure of two hundred and seventy thousand. No specific holding account seems to be allocated and the money's just been shown as being available to spend on anything. So to sum up, Madam Mayor, can we have confirmation that the previous cabinet really grasped the legal requirements of this statute? Or has the decision left the council open to judicial challenge? Furthermore, can local residents and business owners be provided with clarity over how the potential surpluses are going to be or are currently being used? And the decision finally, I'll say, was flawed. It needs to be reviewed as quickly as possible with a mind to go in some way to reversing the harm
You've got thirty seconds left councillor Carr.
to our town centres, our independent businesses and the reputation of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay councillor, uh, Richard McCree, would you like to speak?
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, Madam Mayor, I stand you, I stand before you this evening as a concerned member of our community, deeply troubled by the recent changes to car parking charges and the removal of the one-hour-free parking policy in our borough. These changes, though perhaps intended to address financial concerns or streamline operations, have had a significant and adverse impact on our local businesses and the vibrancy of our high streets. Over the past months, I've spoken with numerous business owners, employees and residents who have all expressed their dismay at the consequences of these new parking policies. It is with their voices in mind that I bring this issue to your attention. Local businesses are the lifeblood of our community. They provide essential services, employment opportunities and contribute to the unique character of our borough. However, the recent charges, sorry, changes in parking charges and the elimination of the one-hour-free parking have severely diminished footfall in our town centres. Customers who once popped in for a quick purchase or errand now find it less convenient and more costly to do so. This change in behaviour is having a devastating effect. Some businesses have would have been forced to close their doors permanently and others are struggling to keep a flow, with one noticeable establishment announcing it will reduce its opening days due to the significant drop in customers. The ripple effect of these closures extends beyond just the loss of a shop. It affects employees, suppliers and the overall economic health of our community. The decision to remove the one-hour-free parking has discouraged casual shoppers and visitors. Instead of fostering a welcoming environment where people can enjoy a leisurely stroll through our high streets, we are seeing empty pavements and vacant store windows. This is not the thriving community we envisaged for Brockstow. I urge the council to reconsider these parking policies. We must find a balance that supports both the financial needs of the borough and the economic viability of our local businesses. Reintroducing the one-hour-free parking could be a lifeline for struggling shops and a step towards revitalising our town centres. In conclusion, the impact of the recent changes of car parking charges is evident in the declining fortunes of our local businesses. By addressing the issues and making thorough adjustments, we can work together to restore the vitality and prosperity of our high streets, let us support our local residents and create an environment where businesses can thrive once more. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Councillor Williamson.
Madam Mayor, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I stand before you as a councillor deeply concerned about the recent decision to remove the one-hour-free parking provision. For many years, the free parking initiative has been a lifeline for our local businesses. It has encouraged shoppers to visit Eastwood, supporting our local economy by making it easier for residents and visitors alike to access our shops and services without the burden of parking fees. Since the removal of this provision, we have seen a noticeable decline in footfall, which has had a devastating impact on local business. In Eastwood, we currently have twenty-one empty shops, which seems to me to be lower than the eighty-eight percent occupancy figures reported to a cabinet meeting recently. While speaking to businesses about the petition, I've been made aware of four further businesses which will be closing soon, with another two seriously considering closure. Small independent businesses are the backbone of our community. They are run by local people who invest their time, money and passion into our towns. Indeed, your MP Darren Henry recently spoke in parliament about the importance of our high streets and the need for local authorities to provide accessible and affordable car parking to support the town centres. Businesses rely heavily on a steady flow of customers, many of whom used to pop into town during their lunch breaks or for a quick visit, knowing they could park for free. That steady flow of customers is no longer there. In fact, some shops do not see a single customer walk through the door all day on some days. The removal of the free parking disproportionately affects our most vulnerable residents, the elderly, parents with young children and those with limited mobility. If the shops are forced to close, there will be nowhere for residents to go to meet people, buy what they need or just go for a wander, leading to more social isolation and reduced access to essential services. The economic impact is clear. Businesses are reporting a significant drop in sales, which will lead to job losses and even more shop closures. The decline is not just affecting business owners. The whole town is feeling the strain of reduced employment opportunities and loss of community spirit. Eastwood has been left behind for years as regards to investment and we are now paying the price. Therefore, I urge this council to reintroduce the free one-hour parking scheme. This small significant gesture will go a long way to help restore the vibrancy of our town, support our local economy and ensure that Eastwood remains a welcoming and accessible place for all. Please, let's work together to find solutions to benefit our whole community. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
councillor Land.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Williamson touched on a little of the more vulnerable members of our society. I raised a question at a previous meeting and this has been discussed at scrutiny as well and I will be raising it further at, um, future scrutiny meetings. I had a call from a resident about a month into the new, uh, parking charges who explained that every time he visits his G P and stay proud, he has to pay a pound for the privilege now that they've got these parking charges in place. And that struck me as a rather unintended consequence of this, this scheme. And, um, I, I, I support this motion around creating some kind of free, free period. I was grateful at the time, Kevin, one of the officers, gave me suggestions of areas where he could park for free, but that involved walking some distance and his mobility is limited, but not limited enough for him to have access to the blue badge scheme or anything like that. And I imagine there are other residents suffering as such, not least the effect that this has been having on local businesses across, across the borough. So I'll be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Owen.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Carr asked us to set out what our position was as a Conservative group on parking charges. Well, I'm more than happy to. I'm sorry he hasn't been listening as we've been going along during the course of this last year. But I can take him back to the last time we were in control and we introduced extra sessions where people could park free of charge as a boost to business and that is what it did. It was the idea of my predecessor councillor Jackson and that was a huge success. When it came to the proposal to introduce car parking charges at cabinet, although, as has already been pointed out, I am not a member of cabinet, I was allowed to speak and I spoke against them. I objected in the strongest possible terms. And then when it came to the budget in February time and we were agreeing the budget including the car parking charges for this coming financial, this current financial year, the Conservative group proposed an amendment to that budget to restore the free parking that had been in place and had only recently been removed. And we set out how it would be paid for. And that was sanctioned and agreed by the section one five one officer, the financial officer of this council who has to validate all proposed changes to the, to the budget. So that was financially doable. We proposed as a Conservative group that those charges that had been imposed should be removed. And guess what? Guess what? It was only the Conservatives that actually supported that amendment to the budget. The other groups that are shedding crocodile tears tonight voted, voted for the existing budget to increase and to keep the increase in car parking charges. Well, at least they've had a demarcine conversion and I'm glad they've come onside and are now starting to agree with us. But I think the motion that they set out tonight really doesn't go to the heart of the problem. We don't need a review into what's happening because we all know what is happening. You only have to drive around at about five o'clock and you'll see empty car parks across the borough. And councillor Carr, and this is probably the one point I will agree with him on, gave the figures for the reduction in the number of visits to Brockstow's car parks since the charges were introduced. Between the new year and now, there have been approximately just under fifty thousand fewer visits to Brockstow's car parks as a result, almost certainly of the car parking charges. And so we don't need to review what's happening. We know what's happening. The licences that were going, were being introduced to allow overnight parking, I know in Kimberley they've not sold one. So I'm going to propose, the Conservative group are proposing an amendment to this motion. We'll leave everything intact up to and including part four. And the last paragraph, I'll read out the substantive amendment that I've had verified and validated by democratic services. And the amendment reads, this council calls for an immediate and urgent review of parking charges by cabinet conducted in public to investigate how the- to investigate how these new charges can be reversed, how these new charges can be reversed to remove the adverse impact of the new charges on all town centres' independent businesses. That's where the Conservative group stands. We want to see them gone and the sooner they're gone, the better and to the benefit of businesses across the borough. So I hope that's clear and I hope everybody's taking it on board. councillor Pringle will second my amendment.
Thank you. Do you want to speak, councillor Pringle? Yeah, okay. councillor Pringle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't want to say a lot because I spent nine hours on an aircraft last night, so my brain is not working too well. There's a couple of things I wanted to pick up on and the word hypocritical was mentioned and political stance was mentioned. And I think that's what we've just had tonight, is some hypocrisy and some political stance. Because as councillor Owen said, four months ago, we actually proposed a similar thing and the people there didn't support it. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
councillor Carr is the proposer of the motion. Are you willing to accept the amendment?
Yes, Mayor. I'd just like to point out that we've been attacked by the Conservative Party again, but what a surprise. It wasn't the only thing that the Conservatives proposed in amendment to the budget as one. And we can only vote for them all as one. And quite frankly, whether it had got the approval of the section 151 officer or not, it still looked like it had been written on the back of a fat packet. And we could not possibly support that. However, Madam Mayor, we will accept the amendment.
Okay. Do we have a seconder for that?
No, does the seconder agree?
Does the seconder agree? Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we'll move on to debate the amended motion then. Thank you. The amendment. Would anybody like to speak? councillor Ridulovic.
Again, Madam Mayor, on the amendment, what this amendment does is talk about one issue regarding car parks only. There are a multitude of issues that affect town centre viability. One of the big issues that we've had to deal with in particular is the massive growth in antisocial behaviour. You all know what's happened around the cinema area and undoubtedly that's had an impact. We got that message from the cinema owners themselves. We've seen a massive increase as well, particularly in the north of the borough, on the use of knife crime. In fact, we not only had a domestic murder one day, we had a machete fight as well on the same day in Eastwood. And consequently, Madam Mayor, one of the big issues is around antisocial behaviour. But it's not just about antisocial behaviour. I said it's about rents, it's about rates, about ratable values, it's about lack of investment, particularly from government into these kind of areas that need them the most. But also on top of that, Madam Mayor, we look at things like food prices, double digit inflation figures over the last two to three years. We look at things like dramatic rises in increase of energy costs, the state of roads, the state of footpaths are an absolute disgrace, particularly in the north and even in parts of Beeston. But in the north, around Eastwood and Kimberley, it's absolutely disgraceful. As well as the footpath, the walkways access to your town centres. There is a whole plethora of issues that need to be looked at comprehensively rather than on one microscopic part. Car parking is a big issue, but compared to some of the other issues, put it into perspective. It needs to be considered as a whole town centre viability. What I'm proposing to do through cabinet, and the reason we haven't put this forward on the table tonight is because a general election was called yesterday and consequently we will be entering a pre-election period. So we can't start any meetings during that election period. They would be deemed to be political. So, Madam Mayors, the deputy leaders are already referred to. We will arrange meetings in places like Eastwood, Stapleford, Beeston, Kimberley in particular. We will look at a whole range of issues that affect town centre viability. Because we also, Madam Mayor, in the process of lobbying, whichever government comes to power after July, whichever side of the coin is selected, we will be trying to work with governments to try and attract the sort of investment that all our town centres need, not just Chilwell, Irood or Beeston, all of them require. But also, Madam Mayor, now the mayoral elections are out of the way and we have got funds from central government into the region, we are also putting on the table a list of proposals for the new mayoral combined authority to consider how we can improve access arrangements, improve disability access, to improve our shop frontages, to improve our town centres in general, to bring things like arts and heritage and tourism, particularly those that have that heritage connection. So, Madam Mayor, the point I'm trying to get to is that we are prepared to work with people to look at a whole range of issues. So when we actually talk to the mayor, the new devolved mayor and the new budgets from central government that will be coming into our area, what we'll do, Madam Mayor, is not just talk about one issue, we'll talk about a whole range of issues that we need to tackle, particularly inequality and lack of access and affordability to services. One of our key riders of our economic strategy is to encourage health providers within the town. Kimberley and Stapleford both have primary care facilities, Eastwood and Beeston doesn't. Beeston, we're close to success on and that formed a fundamental part. Also, Madam Mayor, only two weeks ago, I think, I was talking about the amending the planning laws, to encourage and to demand that each town over 5,000 population has a banking hub and access for people online, which would attract footfall into the town. But it's those kind of figures, Madam Mayor, it's those kind of facts that need to be put as a comprehensive strategy and a policy to attract a level of funding that we need to sustain our town centres. And whilst I don't pretend that Brockstow is particularly wealthy or rich, but we certainly have managed our finances excellently and we're not in a position that some cities and towns up and down the country, Madam Mayor, are facing bankruptcy, we have tried to invest in new shop frontages and access in particular. And the list I trotted out earlier, Madam Mayor, amongst the division of certain people, is a fact in reality, it doesn't stop there. We actually work very closely with a number of groups and organisations. But in the past, the forums that we've had with the business sector have always failed because of lack of input from the business sectors. So we are preparing to put together.
Can you not please shout out?
No, I don't mind.
Yeah, or interrupt.
Sorry, I didn't hear it. Tell me after. So, Madam Mayor, that's what we are proposing to do. And I reject the amendments and the motion simply because they do not cover the comprehensive issues that matter to the viability and access and affordability of a regional or town centre. So I ask you all to reject those, Madam Mayor, support the recommendation to establish a group of forums across the whole of Brockstow to discuss with the business sector and service providers about the best way forward that we can apply for funding for both government and the new devolved mayor to encourage the growth and development of our town centres.
Thank you. councillor Ball.
Ladies and gentlemen, fellow councillors, I'm going to support Philip's amendment. But also, I'd like to welcome some of the remarks that councillor Ridulovic has made because I do think we need to go further down this road and I would like to be included in that if it were possible and I'll tell you for why. I feel very sympathetic for the traders because my life, I was an independent trader and I know how hard it is. I know the difficulties. And sometimes I think when you've got your own little business, people think you're absolutely rolling in money and I know that's not the case. I know by the time you've paid your rent and your rates and you were a sole person and you spent all your money on buying the goods that you're wanting to sell that week, it's difficult, it's hard. And I know for a fact that people, if they can park the car for an hour, you can do a lot of trade, you can nip in and nip out and you can do a lot of good. And that's what I'd like to see. And I do know, and I have been told, there's a trader, a lady in Eastwood, whose trade has gone dramatically downhill since this car parking charge has come. So I would like to see all these facts and figures that you're giving to me. I'm afraid I've lost the plot. All I know is the people, they are wanting some help, they're wanting some assistance and they are wanting sympathetic people. And it's down to you, Millen. I shall make sure that you do it. You can rest assured, I hope you.
Would anybody else like to speak on the amendment? councillor Bun.
Madam Mayor, under the standing orders, as the amendment was accepted by the speakers, it's 13.6, that becomes the motion and we can debate the amendment, debate the amended motion. So anyone who is under the impression that we like debating the amendment is unfortunately involved.
If I can assist you, Madam Mayor, that is correct. Because it was accepted by the proposer and the seconder, this is the alteration of the motion.
Right, okay.
So we are discussing the motion as amended and accepted. Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak on the motion? councillor Bun.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start by saying that I don't take lightly any of the points raised by local businesses here tonight. It has been an extremely difficult year, as I think anyone in this room can speak to, on top of a number of difficult years, with cost of living increases, including inflationary pressures, increases in wages and increase in many other costs, costs at which I will have to say that our government has done very little to help us with. The pressure on many organisations is high and unfortunately councils are not immune to that pressure, with our budgets being slashed by central government as both our costs and the need for them continue to rise in local communities. This is a deliberate political choice by our government, of course, and this council is not immune from that. Despite doing an excellent job at bringing in additional funds on top of our core funding and more importantly, actually using those funds in many ways across our town centres, our parks and the other areas of our borough, compared to many other local councils in Nottingham. In this environment, we are having to make difficult choices around continuing to subsidise non-statutory services at the expense of other vital services. And I thank councillor Barbara Carr for pointing out that we are having to borrow money to cover costs of car parking charges in the next year because we do not have the funds to cover it in other ways. So this brings me to the subject that I want to address here, which is this motion and the fact that one of the other councillors mentioned at the start that this is not a political motion that is purely being brought here to support local businesses, which I don't believe to be true. In here, it talks about the subject of manifestos in this motion. Petition claims that we should not have increased car parking charges because we didn't put it in our manifesto six months ago and that no consultation took place. The implication is that we have done something underhanded in doing so and that is not true. There are many things that we do and will do that aren't in our manifesto, from distributing grants to supporting local businesses, responding promptly to flooding, distributing aid and support and ensuring that victims were properly rehomed.
Point of order, Madam Mayor, we're not actually debating part four anymore because that's been removed.
It hasn't. They said up to and including part four. They went on to this one.
You said taking it out, didn't you?
Up to point four.
Up to, but not including point four.
I'm going to continue unless you told otherwise.
If I can through, Madam Mayor. So the amendment's been made to the conclusion paragraph. So the additional point at four was supportive information towards the conclusion, which we were being asked in the original motion, was for an immediate and urgent review of parking charges and to conduct it in public by an inquiry, whereas the change that's been accepted now is that these go back to cabinet to be conducted in public. But I think points one to four still apply.
That was my understanding.
But that's not what we heard when councillor Owen studied. He said up to point four, up to point four.
It's what the amended motion says.
That's what you're reading, councillor Carr.
Isn't there any more, is it?
I mean, perhaps it'd be nice if you understood what the amendment you accepted.
You've just had clarification from the monitoring officer.
Anyway.
So would you like to continue, councillor Bun?
So some of the other things that we've done that weren't in our manifesto were relaunching the youth mayor, volunteer awards, recognising many vital contributions of people to our community, developing an extensive local arts and cultural programme, which is funded through bringing in additional funding that's not part of our core funding in order to bring people through into our town centres and areas of our borough. What is also, what is in our manifesto is to ensure that there are no cuts to jobs and services, both of which would be devastating for local residents and for local businesses. We did not sell off our car parks to private companies as councils have done elsewhere, which would charge far more for parking than we do with far less recourse. What is also in our manifesto is continuing commitment to be carbon neutral by 2027, a commitment that many of our fellow councils from parties supported, including Liberal Democrats and independent councillors who brought this motion. Part of that means encouraging a change of behaviour by encouraging fewer car journeys to preserve our environment and protect the health and wellbeing of our residents. That is part of the reason why when we brought in these charges, we made sure it was a longer period of time for a small charge, to encourage people to come in for longer into our town centres, to stay, to partake of multiple businesses instead of just popping in for one thing and to take advantage of the many businesses within our town centres. Our colleagues are usually supportive of motions in support of the environment and our carbon neutral commitments, including one of the Lib Dem councillors who said recently that he wanted everyone to walk and cycle instead of driving. So I find it disappointing that he's now backpedaling on that tonight. We also ensured that those less able to access we also ensured that those less able to access those alternatives, as not everyone can cycle or walk or easily access in those ways, continues to be able to park for free through retaining free disability parking throughout our car parks. We were also entirely transparent about this process. It was raised at a policy committee, which I chaired, before this decision came before cabinet, a committee in which it was mentioned as part of the early review of budgets and a meeting in which I explicitly asked whether anyone wanted further discussion of this subject. Councillors from all parties were present at that and did not take that opportunity. It was also presented, when it was presented, these were all at public meetings. Cabinet is a meeting at which anyone is able to attend and I would encourage people to do so because I believe that people should be involved in the decision-making. It was also, as has been previously mentioned.
You've got 30 seconds.
Raised at budget, where the only alternative proposal, as previously mentioned, was by the Conservative Party and not by any of the councillors raising this motion. That alternative we unfortunately couldn't do because that would have meant breaking a manifesto promise by cutting services because they proposed to fund it by increasing our vacancy rate, which would effectively reduce us staff. I want to end by saying introducing charges is never popular. No one ever wants to pay for something that they've had for free. Sometimes it is, however, necessary. The introduction of this small charge allows us to protect our services that so many residents rely on. It means we have kept our manifesto commitments that we were elected upon. It allows us to ensure the council continues to operate effectively on a budget that ensures we can continue to provide those services going forwards without the risk of bankruptcy or cuts confronting many other councils in this difficult time.
Okay. Would anybody else like to speak? councillor Watts.
I'm a Yorkshireman. In Yorkshire, we call a spade a spade. What a load of rubbish we have heard tonight. We've heard rubbish from the Conservatives telling us that the Liberal Democrats voted against their motion, not true. We've heard rubbish from the Conservatives telling us that the Liberal Democrats voted against their motion, not true. We've heard rubbish from councillor Byrne saying that councillor Kingdom is reversing his position when he hasn't even said a word, not true. And we've had smoke and mirrors from the rest of the Labour group telling us firstly, it's free on Sunday, so you should all be happy with that. Secondly, they're spending lots of money on different things, so you should all be happy with that. And thirdly, it's all your fault in any case. What a load of rubbish. Most local people just want a good supportive local council. And a good supportive local council listens to its community. You messed up on this. There is nothing wrong with saying, we messed up, we got it wrong, we'll reverse the decision. Because however warm you may feel about keeping a manifesto commitment, and it would have been far more intellectually honest to have had this in your manifesto if it's what you were going to do, it's no use to businesses who are going bust because of your actions. And that is what is happening. You've heard it from the locals traders, you've heard it across the borough. You are causing a problem. You can put this problem right by simply reversing what you did. And just to be fair to the independent group, because I know we've been given the credit as Liberal Democrats for bringing this motion, but actually it's the independent group's motion, and I don't want to steal their thunder on this, but I happily support the motion because it's the right thing to do. Come on, folks, you've got it wrong. Fess up, put it right, and enable businesses to carry on and enable Beeston, Eastwood, Kimberley, and Stapleford to thrive. That's what we're here for as a council. Please, leave your dogma aside and do the right thing. Thank you.
Councillor Marshall.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a lot to say because I said I would earlier, and I'm going to try and rattle through it. I hope you give me some indulgence on that. Brockstow Council has had cuts of nine million pound over the last 14 years. There are 317 councils in the country, there are 164 districts, there are 21 county councils, there are 36 metes, 62 unitaries, and a few London boroughs. We are the 14th most affected, the 14th most cut council in the entire country at any tier. But we're committed to protecting jobs and services, and nevertheless, despite that, over the last 14 years, we've had free car parking for the last 10. Okay, that was the last time, 10 years ago, that car parking charges were changed. There is a, there is an inference that somehow the council are trying to introduce this as a de facto money-making scheme. That is incorrect. Councillor Carr touched on earlier some of the legislation, but I think she's got kind of a narrow view of the impact of the services of the council, and a narrow view certainly of how finances are managed within the council. All of the money that comes from car parking goes into the general fund. It is all general fund, and it is a loss-making service. We are losing money, and I've done for years and years and years, tens of thousands of pounds a year on car parking. And indeed, the capital works that is needed, that she mentioned around investment, they need to be financed. They are financed from the revenue of this council. That is how it works. It's not free money, capital money, it is financed from the resources of this council. Now, when we're balancing, when we're protecting cuts from services, I'm talking about street cleaners, and I'm talking about refuse workers, and I'm talking about, I'm talking about the parks team, I'm talking about those doing partnership work to extend the public space protection order from Beeston Town Centre down to Chilwell Co-op. I'm talking about those who do work against protecting violence against women and girls, and I'm talking about environmental health inspectors because they're funded from the general fund. And if we are subsidising a service or losing significant amounts of money, other cuts have to be made. And I'm quite clear, there's a political choice that has to be made in these points. And that is what has happened here. Now, the inference that this is somehow secret is a misnomer. Councillor Owen is exactly right. Every single councillor who is proposing this motion tonight was at the budget meeting, which is a public meeting, and recorded by the way, and every single one of them had the opportunity to support councillor Owen's motion. Now, I don't agree with councillor Owen because I think his motion could have bankrupted this council in about 10 years. That's the trajectory. I don't agree with that. I think it was financially illiterate. But nevertheless, they had the opportunity to do that. Not one of the councillors, not one of the councillors supported his amendment. Every single councillor who told you tonight that they're not making political grandstanding or gestures had the opportunity to do what councillor Owen did. Not one of them did. Not one of them did. They could have proposed an alternative, not one of them did.
Can you not interrupt, please?
Not one of them, take that off me time, take councillor Carr's interruptions off me time. Not one of them did, okay? Not one of them did. And they had two bites at the cherry. Because when the substantive motion came back, after councillor Owen's motion was lost, not one of them voted to oppose the budget. They all supported it. It was a public meeting, it was, it was, they didn't, the councillors who moved this motion all supported the budget. Every single one of them. Councillor Steve Carr, councillor Barbara Carr, councillor Donna McCrae, Richard McCrae, and Liz Williamson, who proposed this, all supported the budget with these car parking charges in it. And when they try and stand here and say interstunt, they are incorrect. Because it can only be viewed in that way.
Please, councillor Carr.
You know when a ref stops his watch on the football pitch? Every time Steve interrupts, I'll just do that. I told you there were 317 councils in the country. Brockstow ranks 248th in terms of income from car parking across all of those councils. Ashfield was heralded earlier, guess where they ranked? 244th. They're just above us. And they're just above us to the tune of about £20,000. Okay? Gedlin was heralded earlier. Where do they stand? They're 249th. They're immediately below. But there are other councils, councillor Carr, like Rushcliffe, who net 480,000, Newark net 700,000, Arewash net 232,000, Nottingham City Council net 14 million pound on car parking charges, and we're not taking that approach. We're doing the least impactful approach. And by the way, we're taking a hit ourselves. We're taking 850,000 pound out of our revenue budget when we've only got 6 million left. And when we get down to one and a half million.
I'm sure you've got 30 seconds.
And when we get down to one and a half million, well, I've got more than that, when we get down to one and a half million, the financial, the financial office will be knocking on our door. But we're shielding all of you from another million pound a year nearly on subsidy. That's what we're trying to do. So what are we going to do about it? Well, there's five new businesses open on Chilwell Road since the car parking charges were introduced. There are five new businesses, okay? There's the vape shop, there's the cob shop, there's the nail salon, there's the hubs that we were talking about earlier, and then there is a significant interest in the corner of Imperial Road as well. I don't think that demonstrates that they're having an adverse impact on car parking charges. But there are things we can do. We have absolutely promised that we will work with businesses. Previous working with businesses has failed, and all the businesses voted themselves to defunct the Beeston bid, which was kind of analogous with that. They voted to come out of that, working with the council about how we can improve time. So let me just suggest some things. We could put up council tax, we haven't done that. We could draw more on reserves, and we'll go bust in that. I'm happy to work with businesses who, for instance, have a delivery charge on their prescriptions. It's important.
I'm going to let you round up the eight separate discussions just because of the interruptions.
For instance, we could have no prescription charges, delivery charges. But when there's a cost to businesses, like a pharmacy, they put a charge on. We're not immune from those costs. We're not immune from energy prices impacts, or we're not immune from cost of living crisis. We're not immune from all of these things. I've got an idea, which I will be, which I've already said I'm committed to. Let's have a scheme where local businesses knock one pound off on proof of receipt of a parking ticket for anybody who uses a local business. And I will help, and this council will commit to helping businesses with a scheme like that. We will advertise it, we'll promote it, we'll put it in the press, we'll do everything. But if local businesses are prepared to knock a pound off their customers.
Yeah.
They're going to use it. That is something we should look at. Failing that, you're going to expect us to subsidise that, and I tell you, we'll go bust. And the answer of going bust is, we can sell the car park.
Councillor, I have allowed a lot more time.
If we sell the car park, it'll go forever. Okay?
He has been interrupted quite a lot. Thank you, councillor Marshall. Right, would anybody else like to speak? Okay, so I'm going to move this to the vote.
To the proposer.
Oh, would you like to sum up to the pro, Philip, councillor?
They've accepted the vote.
Yep.
Do you think I sum up because it's been accepted, is that?
Yes, so in line with 13.92, it says a close of an amended debate. The mover of the amendment shall have a right to reply.
Okay.
And then the right.
So councillor, would you like to sum up councillor Carr?
Thank you. I'm in quite an envious position here because I can hear what the people behind me are saying, and some of you can't unless they shout it out, which I can understand why they have on occasion. And I have to say, the Labour group won't be here happy about to hear what some of the people behind me are saying because they're not impressed by some of the things you're saying. Can I just say, Greg, I'll come to you first because you've just told us that the car parking fees go directly into the general fund. So how can you be checking that this money isn't being used for items that aren't permitted under the Road Traffic Regulation Act 1984? And, it sounded like it to me, if you are spending that money on other items not specified in that act, it's illegal.
Point of order, point of order, chair, please.
Can I, can I ask the monitoring officer to see whether I said that or not? That is completely untrue. That is completely untrue, and he's trying to, he's, he's, he's making false statements in this debate.
I wrote it down as soon as you said it.
Well, I know you did, but you, you're making false statements. I did not say that.
You said, that you, you said that you've got a narrow, you accused councillor Carr, you accused, before, you accused councillor Carr of being narrow-minded because the car parking fees go direct into the general fund. It was quite specific.
No, I, I would, I would debate that, actually.
Well, of course you would, it's one of your group.
I think she said a narrow understanding.
She is not bothered.
So clearly a point of order has been raised, it's been disputed. I don't have an exact note, I don't know if anyone else does.
Okay, well, I'll move on then. I'll retract that. I've said it, but I've retracting it.
Thank you, carry on.
And you've mentioned Ashfield netting £400,000, did you say that?
No.
Well, what did you say then?
Well, I didn't say it. I've got exactly what I said.
What did you say then?
I said they were 244th in the list.
No, you said the netting.
I said Rushcliffe netted, Newark netted, Nottingham City Council, Arewash. And I said Brockstow, Ashfield, and Gedlin didn't, and they were just below each other in the list. That's exactly what I said.
The list of people who have had money taken off them? Well, then again, that's probably why all the, all the businesses behind me are very confused. Yes, dear. Well, I do know one thing that I'm talking about. You said that you haven't put council tax up when you put it up by 2.99%. But there you go. You did say that.
Okay, councillors, there's clearly a dispute here. Can we just carry on? Councillor Carr, would you like to carry on some of your opinions?
I am carrying on. What I will ask for at some stages is that this is looked at on the YouTube of this recorded YouTube to see what councillor Marshall said. Councillor Marshall and I do get on, believe it or not, outside of this council chamber. But I, I must be deaf or something, because anyway, let's, let's move on. Can I just say as well, councillor Rudulovic, he knows I've got ultimate respect for him, and I do think he is quite, and I think you've brought this whole councillor ball, I think he is very sincere that we want to improve the whole, the holistic, if you like, town centre. But some of those things we don't do as a borough council. The footpaths and the pavements and the roads are looked after by the county council. Somebody bought up ASB being dealt with. Well, that's dealt with by the police. We make, we get involved on a, a, a scale that we, as councillors, we want to make sure that there isn't ASB. And councillor Marshall and I walked out in the centre of Beeston when the, the police were starting Operation Potassium, when we were having all the trouble. But that really is where it ends because it's then due down to the police. And it's the police that bear the financial brunt of having to pay overtime to their officers because there weren't enough of them at the time to actually police this operation. And can I just say as well, yeah, I was one, and still am, one of the people that had never really agreed that we needed a regional mayor in the first place, or wasted money, in my opinion. The government should have just given the money that they've got available to the existing councils to do what they want to. But it's no good improving shop fronts if the shops aren't best. You know, and then, and it's no good having banking hubs if people won't pay the car parking fee to use the banking hubs. They'll go to Ashfield. They'll go to Ashfield, or they'll go to Gedlin, or, you know, it's, it's just an absolute nonsense. Yes, councillor Byrne, local government has suffered financially, I agree. But so have our residents and so have our businesses. They haven't got the ability to use their resources to make extra money to try and plug that gap. And in the meantime, that money that you're getting from residents is hurting our businesses and our town centres immensely. I've heard a lot tonight about you independents, well, there's a reason why we're independents, and that's because we haven't got any political dogma. And I'm pleased to say, I am not, I am not grandstanding tonight because we, we have not got a candidate in the general election in Brockstow. That you lot have, well, I don't know actually, I don't know whether you have or not. I bet not one of you will be knocking, I bet not one of you will be knocking on the doors for Juliet Campbell. I bet not one of you will. But yet you want to get rid of the Tory government, don't you? So you have the opportunity tonight, the Labour Party has the opportunity tonight to put a wrong right, as councillor Watts so ably put it. If you don't, and you refuse to because of the things that you've said tonight, the people behind me heard all those things, they're not convinced. In fact, I probably completely the other way about this issue. If you don't, then that sends a message that this council does not care. It does not care that people are experiencing a 70% drop in their sales because of these car parking charges, and it shows the complacency of the Labour Party in this issue. Can I just say as well, the days of you being able to come to this council and say that you're not going to get rid of jobs and services was put to bed when you made people redundant at Kimberley Lender Centre. Compulsively redundant at Kimberley Leisure Centre. Never, never come back here again and tell us that you are brighter than bright when it comes to compulsory redundancies. People in the private sector aren't protected from redundancy. I know people now, one of my cousins has been made redundant at the end of this month. He hasn't got the, the accounts behind saying, we'll never met you redundant. Anyway, please vote for the amended motion. Thank you for bringing the amendment, councillor Owen and councillor Pringle. We will definitely be voting for it, and at the end of the day, we support our town centres. We will always support our town centres, but unfortunately, it would appear that our Labour rulers do not. Thank you.
Okay, so just to make it clear, we're voting on the motion with the amendment. The amendment.
Did you call it a vote, Madam Mayor?
Includes this council, yeah. Do we have a second for that? Do we have five members?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so again, we're voting on the motion, which includes the amendment. This council calls for an amendment. calls for an amendment, immediate and urgent review of the parking charges by cabinet conducted in public to investigate how these new charges can be reversed, reversed to remove the adverse impact on the new charges on all town centres and independent businesses. Okay, so right, do we all know what we're voting on?
Yes.
Yeah, so if, if you wish to vote for the amended motion, say for, if you wish to vote against, say against, if you wish to abstain, say abstain. Councillor Bagshaw? Councillor Bales? Councillor Ball? Councillor Bothinger?
Against.
Councillor Brown?
For.
Councillor Bullock?
Against.
Councillor Bun? Councillor Barbara Carr?
For.
Councillor Chris Carr?
Against.
Councillor Steve Carr?
For.
Councillor Cooper? Councillor Cullen? Councillor Danheimer? Councillor Facio? Councillor Harlow? Councillor Hills? Councillor Jeremiah? Councillor Kerry? Councillor Kingdom? Councillor Land? Councillor Donna McCrae? Councillor Richard McCrae? Councillor Marsh? Councillor Marshall? Councillor McGrath? Councillor Me? Councillor Jill Owen? Councillor Philip Owen?
For.
Councillor Patterson?
Against.
Councillor Pringle? Councillor Radulovich? Councillor Skinner? Councillor Pauline Smith? Councillor Vanessa Smith? Councillor Tideswell? Councillor Watts? Councillor Webb? Councillor Williamson? Councillor Winfield? And councillor Woodhead?
So that motion is lost by 15 opposed to 25 against.
Okay.